City Council Meeting, you'll all please rise for the invocation and please remain standing for the Bledge of Allegiance. Tonight's invocation will be given by Rick Malagani, pastor of Fairhope Christian Church.
Thank you, sir. Mayor, City Council, let us pray. Gracious and abundant God, we come to you this evening seeking your presence as we meet to discuss the future and direction of our fair city. Cover this space with your love and grant each of us open minds, receptive hearts, and patient souls. I ask you for blessings upon this council and mayor as they commit themselves to working for the good of all citizens. Please provide wisdom and insight to all involved and guided discussion so that your will is done, in Christ's name we pray. Amen.
(Inaudible) do the fire of the United States of America into the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Rick. Okay, councilman, if you would like to add the resolution that I handed you at the end of the work session to approve the final payment to Walcott Adams Renewal Architects, we will need to amend the agenda, so I would entertain a motion if somebody wants to make it to amend the agenda to add this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to amend the agenda. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of amending the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Okay, that will be added as item number 26. Clark, be sure and remind me of that. First item on tonight's agenda is to approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting, the work session, and the agenda meetings which were held on April the 24th. Do you have any additions, deletions, changes to those minutes? Okay, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve those minutes as written.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes as submitted. Any final discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Okay, minutes are approved. Mayor Wilson, your comments, please.
Thank you, councilman. Just have a couple of updates. Turning it on. On April 27th, we had all of the department heads and some of the assistants go through a series of team building meetings, workshops, and on our fifth meeting, and final meeting was on April 27th, we had it above Boconag. And Monica Anderson, who actually is a student, a friend who graduated from high school with me, she came down and did the workshop. It really was a very positive thing. I think everybody left, probably everybody going, "Oh, gotta go to this workshop." But we all left, and it was, it really did a lot of positive things, and I think that you can expect to see a lot of these things that we learned from the department heads and their assistants and trickling down through the departments. It was a very valuable time spent. Tomorrow night, I will be delivering my State of the City at Centennial Hall, which is on the Faulkner campus. It faces, the building faces School Street, and we'll begin, the doors open at 5:30, and the presentation will start at 6:00. The State of the City is going to be a little bit different. It'll include all the information that you've, if you have come to the ones in the past, a lot of that information, but what I'd like to do, because I still want to get with every council person, and I have, for the most part, gotten with all of them, but for the strategic priorities, I really do want a presentation where everybody has contributed, and of course the citizens have, our department heads and some of the staff have. It really is, what we're looking at is, we want to know where we came from, and a lot of you do, but it's good to always talk about it, and then where we are today, kind of what, how we got to this point, which is all good. And then the next presentation, which is after I talk to everybody, we're going to schedule it and have a presentation of strategic priorities, and it'll be a nice book that was collaborative with all the stakeholders and presented to the citizens. So we will have a date for that tomorrow night, and you can save the date for that. I'm really looking forward to it. This afternoon, I met with Bradley Byrne, and we, he had a roundtable meeting in Daphne City Hall with all the Baldwin County mayors, and I'll be speaking to him again Saturday morning in more detail because I couldn't get all my stuff in, making him come up early on Saturday. And I also want to give a proclamation to Protestant Pantry, if y'all want to stand up. (Inaudible) you, and I want to congratulate you. Protestant Pantry Day, we're issuing a May Day, a cry for help for the hungry and joyful celebration of the many helping hands and hearts in our communities, and shining a light on the invisible issue of hunger. And I wanted to give this to you because it really isn't my fault, I don't do. It's about hunger, increasing public awareness of those who are food insecure in our community and across Baldwin County. It's about understanding the root causes of this invisible issue. It's about recognizing the importance of providing 575 tons of groceries to 17,647 families in the, in 2016. And I just think that's fantastic. Thank you. And I am sorry, I am done. I do that every time I get up here, and everybody's like I'm waiting on her to say that she's done, but I am done. Thank you.
Okay. Next item on the agenda will be public participation. Keep in mind, these are pertaining to agenda items, and this would be agenda items number six through 26, number five is a public hearing, so that's a separate agenda item. So if you would like to speak to items six through 26, please come forward and state your name and address for the record. Going once, going twice. Okay, I'm going to close, public participation on agenda items. Remember, just prior to us going into executive session, we'll have another opportunity for you to come speak to the council of anything else that might be on your mind. Council comments? Councilman Robinson?
Yes, sir. Couple things. I'm going to start, I'm going to remind everybody of a couple of events we have coming up this week. First is Thursday night is the Downtown Fairhope Business Association is sponsoring Girls' Night Out from 4:00 to 8:00. It's a great event, it's a lot of fun, and it's a good way to support your local businesses and restaurants, so I encourage everybody to come out. You can buy tickets online, or you can do it at several local businesses in town. And then Friday night is the Rotary State Cook-Off. I'm looking at Jimmy to confirm that that's right, I think it is right. So another great event, fun time, and I think I heard them say it might rain Friday night, so they've got a contingency plan, so rain or shine, Rotary State Cook-Off is Friday night. And just on a more serious note, I've said this before, people that are critical of each other in these meetings, I think sitting up here, we all welcome the criticism, I think we've signed up for that, but if we could refrain from criticizing other private citizens in these meetings, I think that would be appropriate, and I've said that before, and I fell asleep at the wheel last week, and I think somebody did it, and I didn't say anything about it, and so I just would encourage everybody in public participation to, let's not mention or insult private citizens in these meetings if we can. And that's it, that's all I got.
Councilman Conyers?
All right, I'm going to get my theater plug in. We've got Eastern Shore Repertory Theater is putting on Little Mermaid, that's a musical on the bluff, their annual theater on the bluff, that's going to be this Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. Gates open at 6:30, show starts at 7:30, there's a rain, rain day makeup on Sunday. If you want to purchase tickets, I think they've had a really high demand, so I don't know how many they have left, but you can purchase those online at EasternshoreRep.org. And I do have a slightly biased favor of this play. I've got, my wife and my two daughters are in it, so I'll be there every night, I'm sure, and look forward to seeing y'all out there. Secondly, I just want to thank Mayor Wilson for reaching out this past week. Had a chance to go to dinner with Mayor and her husband, Kiefer, my wife and I did Saturday night, we had a great time. I don't think we spoke one word about politics the whole time, and that was a nice change of pace, so we enjoyed that, and it was a good opportunity to kind of develop some relationships, so I just want to say thank you.
You too, thank you.
And that's it.
Councilman Brown?
Yeah, don't forget the two events they've already mentioned, the State Cook-Off. I'll be down there cooking, so come see me and support our team. Also want to congratulate the Fairhope High School Varsity Girls Soccer Team for making the final four for the first time since they've been 7A. They're traveling to Huntsville, so safe travels to the Varsity Girls Soccer Team, and good luck.
Councilman Boone?
I too will bring up the State Night, because I'm a little bit different position. A portion of the proceeds for the State Night are going to go towards the playground for the special education program at the Fairhope Intermedia School, and I speak a lot of the Special Olympics and the special education programs for these schools, and I think if everybody just has an opportunity to come out there, some of the proceeds will be going towards that playground, and I would certainly appreciate it. Thank you.
Well, I get to go last, so I don't get to mention any of the fun events in town, but I will say this about the State Cook-Off, if you do go, try to get in front of Councilman Boone, because he is the biggest eater in the city of Fairhope, bar none. And I also want to piggyback on something Councilman Conyers said, and I want to thank the mayor for inviting me to lunch on Saturday. I saw some comments, and people thought it was a photo op. It was not a photo op. And we did talk politics, and we talked about a lot of things going on in the city for about a solid hour and a half, and the mayor just invited someone sitting at the table next to us to take a picture, and of course, the people took that, people found a reason to criticize the photo of us, but I appreciated that. And then, so the mayor and I also had probably another hour and a half conversation about city business today, so a relationship is going well and going in the right direction. I appreciate you reaching out to me, and I hope the people appreciate that, and just let you know that that's not a ploy. We've got better things to do than have photo ops, I believe. Would you say that's accurate, Mayor?
Absolutely, that's the last thing I want to do. (Applause).
Appreciate that. With that, I'll close, council comments. Item five is a public hearing. This is an ordinance to amend zoning ordinance number 1253, at the request to rezone the property of Ecumenical Ministries from R2 medium-density, single-family residential district to B2 general business district. The property is generally located at 566 Fairhope Avenue in Fairhope, Alabama. Mr. Dias?
Thank you, Council President. I guess there's a rezoning, Ecumenical Ministries. This was heard by the Planning Commission on December 5th, 2016. In the process, the Ellis family started the rezoning in the process, it was sold, and they wished, the parties wished to hold the hearing until after that was concluded with the purchase, and Ecumenical Ministries then brought it forward. The Planning Commission recommended approval, staff also recommends approval. Be glad to answer any questions you might have.
What's the use going to be of the property?
I am looking, this happened before my time, so let me look through the staff report. I know it's been used commercially through the years, I am not sure of the exact use they're proposing, Mr. Chairman.
I saw a parking lot, I believe, being constructed there. Is that, can anybody, is there anybody here from Ecumenical Ministries that might could?
Bruce from the back.
Yeah, could you explain, do you mind?
I'm Bruce Stone, and I'm president of the board. There were two structures on the property, the Ellis's old home, and then the car building that is still standing there, remaining, the Ellis's old home, which was beyond repair, non-rentable, non-useable, for whatever, what was torn down. We took the opportunity to buy the property to basically protect our interest next door because we do have plans on expansion, our plans are a little bit more short-term than we anticipated. On the portion of the property that we have torn down, which we're currently using for parking, it was not purchased and torn down to be used for parking exclusively. We're planning on relocating our office on that property, hopefully within the next year or two. We're actually on a little bit faster track than we thought. The building that is currently there, which was the old Jack Ellis Delicatessen, and which has always been pretty much a restaurant of some sort, we have made the decision to move the Eastern Shore Meals on Fields headquarters into that building. We have put in a commercial kitchen, and we're in the process of getting our final approval from the city, I think, and our plans will be, there will be no public service in or access, that will be our headquarters for preparation and distribution for all the meals on the Eastern Shore. Once we make the decision to build new office complex on what is now an open parking area, we're planning on expanding the thrift shop, which is known as Emmys, into the existing building offices, which will all be handled in a row. We've tried to be good managers, and we think we did a pretty good job, and we cleaned up the landscaping, and it's, we feel like it looks a lot better than it did, although I miss the hamburgers.
Anything else? Thank you, no, very informative, thank you, sir. Okay, I'll now open the public hearing. If you would like to speak for this issue, please come forward and state your name and address for the record. Seeing no one wanting to speak at the public hearing, I'll close the public hearing. Councilman, I'll entertain someone introducing this ordinance?
I make a motion, we introduce the ordinance for adoption?
Okay, you just say you can introduce it.
Introduce it.
Okay. All right, council, this will lay over for two weeks unless somebody wanted to suspend with the rules and vote for immediate consideration. I don't see any opposition to this, that's why I bring it up, I don't know that there's any, but we can lay it over as we customarily do.
Make a motion, we go ahead and suspend with the rules.
Okay, we do have a motion to suspend with the rules. A motion and a second to suspend with the rules. Clark, call out the question?
Council President?
Aye.
Place two?
Aye.
Place three?
Aye.
Place four?
Aye.
Place five?
Aye.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion for final adoption?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second for final adoption. Any final discussion?
I'd just like to say that Bruce and Paul both here on behalf of Ecumenical Ministries, they do a lot for the community, and I'd like to thank them for that.
Paul does?
Well, Bruce does, I know. Paul's here.
Paul's a good friend of mine, I'm picking on him, he knows it. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any last comments? Okay, Clark, you'll call the question?
Council President?
Aye.
Place two?
Aye.
Place three?
Aye.
Place four?
Aye.
Place five?
Aye.
Okay. Ordinance is amended, thank you, thank you for being here. Item number six is an ordinance establishing that the placement of negotiations of city insurance will be at the discretion of the city treasurer. I will take a stab at this, council. The uniform job description of the city treasurer includes duties, I'll just read directly from the job description, it says duties include negotiations for all insurance contracts with the city, banking services loan contracts, and management of all debts. That's already in their job description. I do know that the mayor has some reservations that this is a power move, and I assured her today earlier that this was not, that she would be involved in these negotiations, but as the treasurer is a council-appointed position, I also want to ensure that the treasurer is always involved in these positions and represents the council. So that was the intent of this, it's been needed to have been put in the ordinance for a long time, and it hasn't been, it's just been overlooked, although it's been one of her duties for a long time. So what I would ask you, in supporting me in passing this ordinance with nothing intended to take authority away from anybody else that's, has any authority to negotiate contracts for the city, I will say that contract negotiations and approving of contracts is a council function, and, you know, we could choose anybody, we could pick anybody out of the audience to do contract negotiations. We're certainly not trying to do that, we're trying to just establish the person that was hired to do that job performs that function.
I appreciate that, Jack, and I just wanted to add, too, that I'd like to know about the meetings so I have time to look at them and have enough time.
Absolutely.
Because we've left some money on the table recently, and I just want to make sure we don't do that.
Absolutely. Okay, would somebody like to introduce this ordinance?
So moved.
Second? It's, no second necessary. Much like the last, if somebody would like to make a motion to suspend with the rules and vote for immediate consideration, do we need that for this ordinance? Clark, we do, don't we?
I move we suspend with the rules.
Okay, we have a motion to suspend with the rules, do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Clark, will you call the question?
Council President?
Aye.
Place two?
Aye.
Place three?
Aye.
Place four?
Aye.
Place five?
Aye.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion for final approval?
Again, so moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second for final approval. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Clark, will you call the question?
Council President?
Aye.
Place two?
Aye.
Place three?
Aye.
Place four?
Aye.
Place five?
Aye.
Okay, ordinance is approved, thank you, council. Item number seven on the agenda is an ordinance to repeal and replace ordinance number 1388 to exempt certain covered items from the miserable sales and use tax during the third full weekend of July 2017 as authorized by Act 2017-120, generally referred to as the sales tax holiday legislation. Ms. Smith?
The city already has an ordinance on the books that we participate in the statewide sales tax holiday for back-to-school. The reason why we need to pass this ordinance is the state of Alabama has changed the dates for that sales tax holiday, and we need to change our dates and our ordinance to be compliant with the rest of the state.
Somebody like to introduce the ordinance?
I'll introduce it.
Okay, your ordinance has been introduced. Any questions for Debra? And we can knock this out tonight, too, if somebody would like to entertain a motion to suspend with the rules and vote for immediate consideration?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second for immediate consideration. Any further discussion? Clark, will you call the question?
Council President?
Aye.
Place two?
Aye.
Place three?
Aye.
Place four?
Aye.
Place five?
Aye.
Okay, somebody like to make a motion for final adoption?
So moved.
Want to, you want a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for final adoption. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Clark, will you call the question?
Council President?
Aye.
Place two?
Aye.
Place three?
Aye.
Place four?
Aye.
Place five?
Aye.
Okay, ordinance passes, thank you, council. Item number eight on tonight, thank you, Debra. Item number eight is an ordinance, amending ordinance number 1587, the rules of procedures in all instances for meetings of the city council, section eight. Council, this, we've had at least one item that we've had to consider every meeting for the last four or five meetings, and I hate that people are having to attend the meetings each week and wait for the outcomes of these meetings, and it just seems to be dragging people's names unnecessarily along with the fact that we haven't been taking any action on this. And so what this change entails is that if something is not approved in a council meeting, it cannot be brought up again for 60 days unless there is a unanimous consent of the council. I had called the league municipalities, lead council, lead council, and asked them if there was anything that could be done about that, and this is what they had recommended. So if you have any questions, I'll try to answer them. If not, would somebody introduce the ordinance?
I'll introduce it.
Okay. Ordinance has been introduced, this can lay over, or we can suspend with the rules and vote for immediate consideration. Somebody like to make a motion for immediate consideration?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to vote for immediate consideration. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll, Clark, call out the question?
Council President?
Aye.
Place two?
Aye.
Place three?
Aye.
Place four?
Aye.
Place five?
Aye.
Somebody like to make a motion for final adoption?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second for final adoption. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Clark, call the question, please?
Council President?
Aye.
Place two?
Aye.
Place three?
Aye.
Place four?
Aye.
Place five?
Aye.
Okay. Ordinance passes, thank you, council. Item number nine is a resolution that the city council approves the selection of Valley House Design to perform professional consulting services for graphic design and layout, and hereby authorizes Mayor Karen Wilson to negotiate a fee schedule and establish a not-to-exceed limit with this firm. Sherri Lee, I think we discussed this in the work session, you weren't here, but you'll just give us a rundown on that.
Yeah, this is a contract with a not-to-exceed, it's a short-term contract for Valley House Design to work on the redesign of the City Sketches newsletter, which will now be a quarterly calendar, to create city presentation templates that can be used in various venues for presentations, web design, and I think those are the three main things that they would be working on. And I believe, Dan, there's a not-to-exceed for that, which was, yeah, no, okay, not yet.
What's not yet?
He said not yet, I was just asking him. I'm still trying to figure out the process, too, like Richard, with the not-to-exceed and what goes to Dan, and Dan's been handling a lot of this.
Okay. Any questions for Sherri Lee?
I had just one question, just because it had been brought up before. I think I'm pretty clear on the intent of this, but there was some concern about, this has nothing to do with redesigning a city logo or anything like that?
No, I'm glad you brought that up, actually.
Just to clarify, this is just for the newsletter, the website?
Yeah, this person actually will be working with Jeff, too, and IT on some web redesign, but the city seal will remain, and I actually plan to talk with Mrs. Nix, we're meeting this week, about that. The city seal is remaining the city seal, nothing is happening to the city seal, we will keep it, but they are, we are looking at branding, just creating a branding book, something uniform throughout the city for colors and things like that, it's pretty standard practice, and we just haven't adopted it, so.
I'll point out, too, that, you know, every city has a city seal, and that's not going to be touched. The brand really will be just part of, you know, something that when you see it, you know it's Fairhope. It's used in two totally different ways, so.
Are they going to give us some options to vote on, maybe?
Yeah, I don't see why not. I don't think, I think that what will be presented will be something we can all look at and give input to. It's not going to be, this is it.
This is not some very long-term contract?
No, no, this is a very short-term, short-term thing. We really want to get it done and get moving, I want to get City Sketches going, and, you know, get the new brand in place and move things forward.
I want to ask one last question, Sherri, that's a little bit more difficult, and it doesn't mean that I would vote against this, I would support this right now, but this company is out of Illinois, I believe. Was there no one local that we could select to do this?
He's an independent contractor, I'm sure there are, and actually, I noticed during the last city council work session, there were a lot of comments, I know graphic designers, I think for this, my preference is this Valley House, based on their qualifications, their background and experience in doing all these things, but moving forward, I would prefer to transition to someone local.
I mean, I guess, how do we find somebody in Illinois that's an independent consultant and?
The gentleman Tyler Ruddick with Valley House is someone that I've worked with in the past, yeah.
Okay, so you have familiarity with him?
I do, and have looked at some of his work even since I've worked with him, and he's done a wide array of things, but yeah, and I, yeah, he's very, he's just a talented... But, yeah, and I, yeah, he's very, he's just a talented graphic designer, but also web designer, writer, kind of across the board, does all of it.
We are going to use local, though, because
Yeah.
we're all about local.
I was going to say, I know somebody.
Definitely local.
We love local.
Yeah.
Anyway, but this was just, you know, it was a small thing, but.
A small thing to help move us forward. This can drag on forever. I've been through a lot of branding exercises. They can go on for months and months, and we want to move it along, so.
Okay, Council, any further questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the selection and allow the mayor to negotiate the fee schedule and establish a not-to-exceed limit?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any final discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Okay, resolution passes. Thank you. Item number 10 is removed from the agenda. Item number 11 is a resolution that the city council approves the selection of Kavanaugh-McDonald Consulting to perform professional consulting services to prepare actuarial evaluation of the city's OPEB liability for fiscal year ending 9/30/16, and hereby authorizes Mayor Karen Wilson to negotiate a fee schedule and establish a not-to-exceed limit with this firm. Ms. Smith?
Our OPEB liability actuarial study has to be done every two years. That's mandated by the GASB, and those numbers are included in the city's CAFER. That's our annual financial statement. So after we have that valuation done, those numbers are used for two years, and then that requires us to have a new valuation every second year.
Any questions for Debra? Somebody like to entertain a motion to pass this resolution?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the selection of Kavanaugh-McDonald Consulting. Any final discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. A resolution passes. Thank you, Council. Item number 12 is a resolution that the city council approves the selection of Clairebird Doro to perform on-call professional consulting services for technical writing for the planning director, and hereby authorizes Mayor Karen Wilson to negotiate a fee schedule and establish a not-to-exceed limit with this firm. Mr. Dias?
Yes, sir, thank you very much. This would be also a very short-term contract. What we're wanting to do is, right now, we have a zoning ordinance and subdivision regulations. We would like to unify those into one unified land development code, very similar to what Daphne uses with theirs. So having two documents, you merge them into one. And what I'd like to do is have this individual help us with that. So you're taking two different writings and placing them into one. She does have a very good technical mind from that standpoint. I've worked with her before in the past. She is local. And also, as we move forward, we'd like to maybe have her help integrate some of the ordinances or amendments that we make, if the council chooses, into that unified land development code as well. And this would be, again, a very short term. It's, you know, I don't foresee this being very long or very costly at all.
Do you see this just kind of continuing until you can get all this off your plate with the moratorium issues?
Yes, sir, primarily, I mean, the one, one big issue that we would like to do is get this unified land development code. I think that makes a lot of sense from a efficiency standpoint. But also, and that would be the largest portion of this work that we'd be asking her to do, but also, as we go forward, just integrating any amendments we make back into that unified land development code. And we do have something ready and present it to legal counsel to review. It's already formatted. It's already written in the proper format. And they're looking at it just purely from the legal merits of it. That's, that was my goal with that. And so, but again, it'd be short-term and very, as needed, but not, not very much, really. And we're not talking about a lot of money.
Questions for Wayne, Council?
Is that something you think can be performed during this moratorium?
We hope to. That's, I think this can be done. And so, yes, I think so. But as we go forward, if we make amendments to it, again, we'd like to be able to use this person. And that would be very, very small-scale integration that she would do for any new amendments we'd have. But yes, I think we can get it accomplished, the unified land development code portion, get it drafted and presented before the end, yes.
Any more questions?
I was going to point out that this also is a less expensive way to do it than to just give it to an attorney after Wayne does his part, just to make sure that everything's technical, technically there, and we'll spend less on the legal.
Not that we're talking ugly about attorneys or anything, just so that's clear on the record.
It's cheaper.
I won't argue with that.
Oh, man. All right, I'll entertain a motion to pass this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the selection. Any final discussion?
Council President.
Yes, sir, Dan.
This is an on-call contract, and if you so desire, you can set a not-to-exceed amount because it's on-call, and like other contracts we have, the work being performed would be charged against that not-to-exceed that you established. And then if that number needs to be extended due to additional workload, we'll come back before you again and extend that. If Wayne has a number in mind based on his amount of work and you wish to add that into this, we can go ahead and, if you approve, we can go ahead and sign the contracts and get it approved. It's your call, sir.
Wayne, did you have a number?
Off the top of my head, I don't see this, at least the initial part of this, going beyond $3,000. With the rate I think that would be charged, I think it's very, a very fair rate. I don't see it going past $3,000. Off the top of my head, I'm not, again, I'm not writing it, but I wouldn't imagine it'd go past that.
So, Dan, you're saying essentially, if we, if we establish a not-to-exceed amount now, we can expedite the process by two weeks?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Now, and approved, the mayor, authorize the mayor to sign the contract. This is not authorizing the, it's not a retain. We're not going to pay them $3,000 or $3,000. It's what we're carving against by the work performed in an hourly basis.
And this would prevent the mayor from having to negotiate that schedule, bring it back two weeks from now?
Yes.
Well, you would have, you would need to, we could withdraw the motion. You could change the resolution to say Mayor Karen Wilson will establish the fee schedule and the establishment of a not-to-exceed limit of $3,000. And we could obviously come back if they needed more.
Right.
That's the way you could do it.
But it seems like time is of the essence on this particular issue, so it'd be better to give them two extra weeks to work on it.
For me, whichever the quickest way is, I'm for.
Yes, sir, just amend the resolution to include a not-to-exceed figure of $3,000 and authorize the mayor to execute the contract.
I think you had to have them to establish the fee schedule. You can't have them say $3,000 an hour.
Right.
So.
Right.
Somebody want to, if you wish, you can withdraw the motion? Who made the motion? Anybody make a motion, Lisa?
Councilmember Conyers.
I'll withdraw my motion.
Okay. Somebody like to entertain an amended resolution that everything up to hereby authorizes Mayor Karen Wilson to establish the fee schedule and establishes a not-to-exceed limit with this firm at $3,000?
I make the motion that we approve based on those adjustments.
Okay.
And authorize her to execute the contract?
And, yes, and authorize her to execute the contract. You might want to say that one more time. We'll get it right here. Jimmy?
Yeah, I'm sorry. So, yes, I make a motion that we approve, or make a motion that we amend the contract, or amend the resolution so that it would cover a not-to-exceed of $3,000 and authorize the mayor to negotiate the fee schedule and sign that contract.
Establish a fee schedule.
Establish not-to-exceed and authorize her to sign the contract.
Yes.
Just say so moved.
So moved.
Second.
We have a second. All right, any final discussion? All right. Hearing no further discussion, all those in favor of this amended resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, resolution passes.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Okay, item 13 is a resolution that the city of Fairhope hereby terminates the contract between the city of Fairhope and RE Pender Incorporated, and authorizes Mayor Wilson to sign the necessary paperwork. As I said in the work session, anytime that we do that, I'm sensitive to the people involved. And Mr. Bob Pender from Florida has done an exemplary job. But we do have a director of operations that can, he can establish our utility rate schedules as needed. This, for instance, last year cost the city about $44,000 to $45,000. And just from what I've seen with Mr. Peterson, Mr. Richard Peterson, the director of operations for the city, he did say that he has some expertise in this and has done this in the past. I believe that he can handle it. And so we'll see. Think that that covers it. Mr. Ames, anything? From you? Okay. I'll entertain a motion, pass this resolution?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any final discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, resolution passes. Item 14 is a resolution to reject all bids for the supply of zinc orthophosphate and TKKP chemicals 2017 for the water department. Mr. McCrory? Go ahead and discuss 15 while you're up there as well.
All right. Our, we took bids on our zinc orthophosphate, and that's a type of, it should be TKPP. That's, it's on there. When we received the bids back, we went through the bids. The lowest responsive responsible bidder, we checked out their reverses, and none of their reverses checked out. The second responsive, responsible bidder had a mathematical error that could not be corrected on the bid. And then that left the third and fourth, and had we awarded them, we'd be paying more than what we're currently paying today. So I was asking the council to reject all those and allow us, under 411651B7, to negotiate with the current vendor, because this is needed use to consume of the operation of our water, water work system. And we have a proven track record with this particular vendor that we have currently. Now, zinc orthophosphate, if you, what that chemical is used for is for lead and copper. Certain houses were built in the 80s when their copper pipes were soldered. They, the solder used a tin lead solder. And what this chemical does, it inhibits that from happening in the, in the, in the home. And we've had a tremendous success, and this is a test that we have to do, and we have to pass this thing every three years. And it has to be done starting in the month of June through September. So it is, it's not something that I take very lightly. It's not like chlorine. This is a very serious chemical we use. We don't want to get into a situation like Flint, Michigan. That was one of the issues they had up there with lead. It's not in the water. It's the pipes itself are being, the chlorine's leaching that out of the lead and copper because there's not an inhibitor in there to stop that. Any questions?
Thanks for scaring us, Dan. Appreciate it.
I'm just telling you how it is.
This is kind of along the lines, though, because item 15 deals with awarding this contract. Who is the existing vendor?
Thornton Muso Bellum is our existing vendor.
Okay. You know, I look at the phosphate price per pound, they're the lowest. If I look at the TKPP price per pound, they're the highest.
Correct, but we only feed that at one well, and that well's only run about three months out of the year. So that number really becomes insignificant at that point because we don't run.
But you also are allowed, under that law, to negotiate that price?
That is correct, yes.
Okay. Any other questions for Dan? Okay, so item 14, our agenda item 14 is to reject all bids. I'll entertain a motion to reject all bids?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to reject the bids. Any final discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Okay, the bids are rejected. Now, item 15 is a resolution that the city of Fairhope voted to procure the zinc orthophosphate and TKKP chemicals for the water department, and based on the option allowed by the Code of Alabama, these are materials needed, used, and consumed in the operations of our water work system, and allow to negotiate with the current supplier to obtain pricing favorable to the city and to continue using materials with a proven history of success. Any questions for Dan? Mayor, are you in agreement with this? Okay. Entertain a motion to pass this resolution?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Purchase the zinc orthophosphate and TKKP chemicals. Any final discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, purchase is approved. The negotiating is approved. Thank you.
Thank you, Council. Thank you, Mayor. If I, if I would, I would like to say something real quick, and I may tell you that the course that the mayor was talking about earlier, maybe y'all ever get a chance to, that lady that taught that was actually wonderful. She kept your attention that whole time. So it was a wonderful course, and it was, it was a lot of fun to sit there. She actually learned a little bit, something about stuff you maybe didn't realize, you know, and it was a good course. Mayor, thank you for setting that up.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Item number 16 is a resolution. The city of Fairhope voted to purchase five vehicles, their 2017 Chevy Tahoe SUVs for the police department. It's the type of vehicle needed, and is on the Alabama State Department of Purchasing bid list, and therefore, it does not have to be let out for bid. The total cost for five is $160,055.95. Mr. Ames, are, can I press questions to you?
Yes.
Are these fully outfitted?
No, sir. They are the PPV off-the-state bid vehicles. And they, there will be a bid let for the outfitting of them, which is our standard operating procedure.
Right, okay. It looked a little low. That's why I asked. I thought maybe we'd get a fire sale on them.
It's a good price off the state bid.
Yeah, okay. Any questions for Mr. Ames, Council?
My only question would be, could we buy them from someone local like Terry Thompson, or?
No, sir, we have to, if we're going to buy off the state contract, we have to buy from the vendor that won the state contract. They bid it out. And the vendor that won it, we go to them. In this case, it's.
Out of Fort Payne, somewhere?
Yes, sir. Donahue.
Sometimes it does occur that a local vendor was the winner of the state contract, so.
I've always encouraged them all to go after it.
Can you get local pricing? I guess you would have to put it out for bid to compare it to the state bid list.
Correct, and the state has already bid it out. I mean, so, I mean, it would be redundant to a degree. We do that occasionally on others.
They bid it out at the beginning of the model year. They may get a higher price. They bid it out at the end of the model year. They may get some closeout pricing.
Well, it doesn't really, yes, possibly. But on these particular, very defined law enforcement vehicles, it's pretty, pretty straightforward.
Okay, all right. All right, Council, I'll entertain a motion to purchase these vehicles?
So moved.
Second.
We have two motions in one second. Any final discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of the purchase, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, purchase is approved. Thank you, Mr. Ames.
Yes, sir.
Item number 17 is a resolution that the city of Fairhope vote to procure non-budgeted meter reading equipment for the meter department from Consolidated Pipe and Supply Company, a sole source provider in the state of Alabama for Neptune Technology Group Incorporated. The units must fit into our existing standardized system. The total cost is $62.20. Council, I'll just save you the trouble. Council, I'll just save you the trouble. We've been through this, you know, ten times, I think, since I've been on the council, and there are no other meters that we can use in the system, so I'll just urge you to go ahead and make a motion. Let's pass this.
So moved.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any final discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, that purchase is approved. Thank you. Item eighteen is a resolution. The City of Fairhope has voted to purchase three-phase pad mount transformers for the Electric Department, two each three-hundred kilovolt amps and two each five-hundred kilovolt amps, and authorizes procurement without formal bid based on the option allowed by the Code of Alabama. The cost will be thirty-six thousand five hundred and forty-eight dollars. And Mr. Peterson, uh, before leaving, wanted me to mention, these are not the transformers that we were discussing in the work session, so, and at the next meeting, when you see transformers come up on the agenda, uh, these are just everyday purchases that are, are needed for our system. Is that right, Dan?
Yes, sir, these are stock.
This is a stock procurement to replace stock that was used.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion for this resolution to be passed.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any final discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Okay, purchase is approved. Thank you, council. Item number nineteen is a resolution to award the bid for pest control twenty-seventeen to BB's Pest and Termite Control with a bid proposal of seventy-two hundred dollars per year. Mr. Ames, any specifics we should be aware of?
There was a glitch in one of the vendor's bids. They did not sign the bid response, and legal, uh, Tuck, um, confirmed my suspicion that that is not a legal bid, and it was thrown out and left us with these, which were more than one, so we presented it. And that's, that's, that's not a, not an unfair price.
Counsel, I'll entertain a motion to pass this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to award the bid for pest control. Any final discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Okay, the bid is awarded. Thank you, council. Item number twenty is a resolution authorizing Mayor Karen Wilson to inform and submit the Municipal Water Pollution Prevention Program Report for twenty sixteen to the Department of Environmental Management. You need a throat lozenge, Dan?
No, I was trying not to scare Councilman Robinson again.
I'm pretty skittish.
Are you? Okay. What you have before you is our Municipal Water Pollution Prevention Program. It's a program that's administered by ADAM. What that program does is throughout the entire year, this, it takes and asks questions about our collection system, our financial, the wastewater treatment plan. And based on how you answer those questions, like if we had a sewer spill, you gain points from that. And what they're actually wanting to do is make sure with this report that municipalities, especially the elected officials, know what's going on. That's why this has to be brought to you. This is everything that's happened. We did score points in here. One is we can't stop it, because there's a plan ages, it, it ages two points every year. Other issues in here, and this has now been corrected, was our Valley Street area in here. So this year, we wound up with twelve points in here, but we've required, we, we have fixed that portion of that to the Valley Street. And on page, I think it's sixteen on seventeen, uh, in the, in the back, it, uh, it tells you that, uh, I think it's sixteen, seventeen, yes, our total points. Anyway, we're in the actions as appropriate range, which we're doing those things, uh, in here. Like I said, there's a lot of data that's in here, but it's a very forgiving report, because like I said, it asks you the question, you gain points. If you fix it, you get to deduct those points. So this whole, uh, report is to keep the elected officials, uh, what's going on in their community and their collection wastewater system.
Okay, and just so you know, council, actions as appropriate, the range was zero to seventy points, and we were twelve.
Twelve, right.
And we probably are less than that now, right?
If you take the, what we've done to Valley, yes, but you're going to gain two more points next year, so we're going to have four, at least four, next year.
Okay. All right, I'll entertain a motion to allow the mayor to authorize the, or to submit the report.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any final discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Okay, resolution passes. Item twenty-one is a resolution. Mayor Karen Wilson is hereby authorized to execute the agreement between Cunningham Delaney Construction and the City of Fairhope regarding Woodlong Subdivision Phase Three and the Tree Remediation Plan. Mr. Dias?
Thank you, Councilman Brown. This is, as you mentioned, a, this is an agreement with Delaney Construction. This is, will remedy a tree removal issue we had, and this will allow them to sign their plat. Uh, we had an issue several months ago where some trees were removed. Uh, their remediation plan is to plant trees back and, and so forth, uh, and this will satisfy, uh, the, the city's issue, and will allow us to sign their plats so they can begin selling lots.
Questions for Mr. Dias? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to pass this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Authorize the mayor to execute the agreement. Any final discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Okay, resolution passes. Thank you, council. Item twenty-two is a resolution. Mayor Karen Wilson is hereby authorized to execute a release and settlement agreement between the City, between the City of Fairhope, Alabama Municipal Insurance Corporation, and the Charter Oaks Fire Insurance Company, AKA Travelers Insurance Company. I ask the city attorney, Mr. Wynn, to explain this, please.
This is a matter that we've talked about before in council and in executive session, and this is the finalization of that, uh, settlement agreement. This is agreement between AMIC, which is Alabama Municipal Insurance Corporation, and the City of Fairhope. And this arose, all of this, the, the facts and the history of this arose out of the Breland lawsuit, which is the lawsuit over the wetlands south of town, uh, south of Nelson Road. And, uh, what happened was AMIC, A.M.I.C., was the insurer of the City of Fairhope. A.M.I.C. refused to honor their contractual obligations to defend and insure Fairhope in that litigation. And so Fairhope, uh, filed a suit against AMIC, its insurer, asking that AMIC be, the courts force AMIC to honor its contractual obligations and defend the city and stand responsible for appropriate damages, if any. So Fairhope sued AMIC. Then along the way, uh, Fairhope and AMIC terminated their relationships, except for this ongoing matter, and, and Fairhope, uh, contracted with Travelers Insurance to insure the city for the future. So in this, and, uh, what happened was, the city had paid, uh, in fees, two hundred and four, eighty-four thousand eight hundred and forty-one dollars, and AMIC, of that amount, AMIC did pay one hundred and twenty-three thousand two hundred and ten dollars. That left a hundred and sixty-one thousand six hundred and thirty-one dollars still owing. And then Travelers paid thirty-five thousand dollars of that, and that left a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars, a hundred and twenty-six thousand six hundred and thirty-one dollars still due and owing, which, which had been paid out by the city and not reimbursed by the insurance companies. Well, in this settlement agreement, which, uh, has been concluded with the help of Matt McDonnell, uh, the, Travelers is going to pay sixty-three thousand three hundred and fifteen dollars. AMIC is going to pay sixty-three thousand three hundred and fifteen dollars, and that is going to have the City of Fairhope reimbursed a hundred percent for their attorney's fees in this litigation. Then AMIC is going to have no further responsibility for the defense or payment of this Breland lawsuit. Travelers is going forward with the city, taking the responsibility for future defense in the case, and that's what this settlement does.
Questions for Tuck, council? If there are any, Jay, I'm expecting you to ask them.
I think Tuck did a very good job of explaining all that.
Okay. Somebody like to entertain a motion to pass this resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Authorize the mayor to execute a release and settlement agreement. And this is just, remember, just between the insurers and the City of Fairhope. This has nothing to do with the pending case, so.
That's right.
I'm going to ask, uh, Councilman Robinson, are you good with this?
I am.
Very good. Have a motion and a second, Clark?
Yes, you do.
Okay, any final discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Okay, resolution passes. Thank you, council. Item number twenty-three, appointments to the Airport Authority. Um, the mayor has given the options, uh, for presentation to the council. Is option one, a nomination for Colonel Blake, uh, to replace Mr. Vince Booth, and option two is a nomination for Colonel Blake to replace Ms. Pam Cordell. Uh, the, uh, read the comments. If you see this back on tab twenty-three, the council can choose which one to replace. Only wants to nominate one for now. Please let me know if you have additional questions, so, uh, if you have any questions for the mayor, uh, please ask. I will stand by my comments all along, is that we have some good Airport Authority members. I'd like to see them serve as long as they're willing. I don't think that, uh, the person that's being nominated by the mayor is any, uh, is not qualified. In fact, they're probably highly qualified, but I do wonder in the future what would happen, who's, who's going to get nominated. So, uh, council, you have a couple of choices there before you. If somebody would like to make a motion for one of these nominations, you're free to do so.
Can I just say something? Um, when we originally did this, um, I did offer up two replacements, and we've talked individually, um, several times, and I did appreciate, um, Councilman Conyers, you know, coming up with the idea of, for now, just appointing one, which is why I, uh, did this appointment this way, so you can choose, um, the replacement. But I was asked about a month ago, when we decided not to put it on, um, that we all were going to do one on the next council meeting, and that didn't happen, so that's why I decided to add it now, just as one.
Well, I think that what I had heard on the, the, um, agreement, and I wasn't a part of it, was that there was going to be one that was going to remain, and one, uh, that they would, uh, other council members would appoint, but this leaves the second one still open-ended, uh, for the future. Council, I'll entertain a motion if you so choose.
Um, I just had something I did want to say, and that was, that I, I do want to try to find some kind of a compromise that is fair, fair to everybody. I mean, right now, we have two highly qualified members. I know, I feel like I'm beating the dead horse. I've said this probably multiple meetings, but between Mr. Booth and Ms. Cordell, we have two very highly qualified individuals. The mayor had initially brought up also two highly qualified individuals with Colonel Waller and, um, Ms. Kieran, and I think that you want to find a way, or what I'd like us to see is to find a way to respect and honor the mayor's right to make nominations, and to also respect the Airport Authority's recommendations of the two individuals they have. Um, I know, right now, it seems to be back at the one and then one carry forward. If there's a way we could come up with either one, and I know the council has no right to nominate for these positions, but they do have the vote, to vote on them, what I would like is if the mayor would be willing to nominate one of the two that's been currently recommended by the Airport Authority, as well as one of the two that you had initially brought up, and then we've got two, and it's a, it's a fifty-fifty split, or even consider looking at adding slots, because I hate to lose any of the valuable experience from the two that are currently on there, um, but I, I think we also have two that are, could bring something new to the table, so.
That's why I said y'all choose, just because if I do it as a slot, then, you know, that's really something that y'all would have to, to come up with, and then, um, for now, I mean, I'll just say I won't ask again. So...
Is it something we could talk about and get you to nominate, maybe one, one of, one that's already on there, either Mr. Booth or Ms. Cordell, along with, um, along with, uh, Colonel Waller?
I'm sorry, what?
Would, would you be in consideration if we were able to sit down and discuss options of, of nominating Mr. Colonel Waller along with either Ms. Cordell or Mr. Booth, where we're actually nominating?
Yes.
The two people for a six-year term?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, we, we'll probably have to talk about it, but that would mean that if you just voted in a new ordinance, that you can't do this for sixty days, then...
Would you be willing to wait sixty days and sit down with me in the, in the interim and?
That's what I'm saying. I mean, it's just...
We can put, we can put it back on if it's unanimous decision of the council, so we can put it back on in a couple of weeks if?
Right.
We choose to do that.
Would that be okay?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, or, or, you know, just another option is you can make a nomination tonight, and it wouldn't, if you had, you know, to choose. Or you can work it out and...
I'd kind of like to sit down and just...
You want to sit down and hash it out?
That's what I would prefer, I mean...
Okay.
Okay.
All right, well, I'll, I'm entertaining a motion for any of these right now. The resolutions fail for lack of a motion. Item twenty-four is to charge off uncollectible utility accounts for the fiscal year twenty twelve to twenty thirteen in the amount of one hundred and eighteen thousand one hundred and seventy-four dollars and eighty-nine cents. Ms. Smith is filling in for Ms. Kabinist tonight? On this item, that is.
On these two items.
On these two items.
Um, as you all know, um, the city is in the middle of migrating its utility billing system from the IBM AS400 system to the MUNIS system that's in our current computer network. As a part of that migration, we need to write off these two thousand twelve and two thousand thirteen uncollectible accounts, so that we will not have to improperly migrate these accounts into the new system. And the same thing goes with the two thousand thirteen NSF checks, and the amount of sixteen hundred and eighty-eight dollars in the next resolution. So generally, this, these two resolutions are brought forth to the council before the end of September, so these numbers can be written off for our financial statement purposes. We are bringing that to the council now in May, and it will not be brought to the council again in September. It's a, a dating issue.
Deborah, I know that it's probably too late for, for these charge offs, and we have to, to vote on this. In my discussion with the mayor earlier today, uh, we, we talked about the need to, uh, we do have a mechanism now, uh, through the legal municipalities.
We do.
System to try to collect these debts. If people owe, though, uh, or if they're getting a refund on their state income tax, well, if they're not getting a refund, I don't know if we get any...
The name of that system is the municipal intercept system.
Yeah, I couldn't think of it. Thank you.
And we received money today in our bank account. We get a notice when they collect money from people. The main thing is, when we write these off, we've written them off the books. We do not stop our efforts in trying to collect the money.
Is there anything else that we could be doing to try to collect this, though? I mean, you work closely with the Revenue Department. Would, would it pay us, I mean, to have someone that's paid to actually go after these bad debts, or, or, you know, what are the, the chances outside of that intercept system to collect these debts?
A lot of times, I've spoken with Jason about this and asked him that question. A lot of times, these people have simply moved on and moved out of town, and they no longer live here.
Well, we, we found in the past that it's pretty easy to start spending good money chasing bad, and in the end, you just end up spending money but never collecting anything. And so I think this system has been a good system to help us with the debt collection. It's doing a good job, and I, I don't know of another efficient way to go about it.
How the municipal intercept, intercept system works is, we turn a list of these bad debts right here over to that system, and, and Jennifer Olmstead and Jason Jarvis try to get that system updated. In fact, these have already been probably included in that list we've sent to the state, because we try to collect before we charge them off to bad debt. And, uh, we send that list to them early in January before people start filing their income tax returns. So if one of these individuals had a five hundred dollar refund due from the Internal Revenue System or from the state of Alabama, we intercept it, and let me backtrack on that. It may just be from the state of Alabama. I would have to check on that. Um, they intercept the money, and they start dividing the money through the, um, taxpayers' creditors, and if the, if the taxpayer owes, um, child support, child support gets the money before we get the money. So there is a list and a, and a sequence of events that the money has to go through, but we have, in the last six weeks, I would say, we've received estimated around a thousand dollars back on these, um, past due bills, really through no effort of our own besides sending them a list.
I want to point out that, um, I think that this is a great system, and of course we want to continue using them. I think that if we were to have a hire that was going after, you know, not only late fees but late payments, I mean, that probably could be a full-time job. We also need somebody that would, you know, collect lodging tax on short-term rentals. There's other things that that person can do that we are not staffed to do right now, and, um, that person would...
and that person would, if it needed to be part-time in the beginning, that's fine, but right now, we don't have that in place because we're short-staffed.
Mayor, do you think you could probably put some, I know everybody's so busy, I hate to ask, but could you think you might could put some kind of potential recovery for all of these things that you mentioned, like lodging taxes for short-term rentals, or uncollected utility bills or such as that? Maybe just surely get some data together to give to the council so we can consider that?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, any questions for Deborah, council?
Is that a high or average?
That's about what it is.
That's about average.
It just came early because we're updating our MUNIS system. So we did look at this figure right when we came in, but this is, again, just because we're updating MUNIS after end of May, after the utility billing's up.
That's correct, mayor.
All right. I'll entertain a motion for the charge-offs.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any final discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Item 25 is a charge-off for insufficient, insufficient checks through prior to the fiscal year ending 2013 in the amount of $1,688. I'll entertain a motion for charging off these insufficient checks?
So moved.
Second.
That sounds like a low number.
I'd say it does sound low.
Is that the right figure?
1,688.
Yeah. Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I just wanted to ask, I know it seems like a long shot, but just sidebar with Councilman Robinson, could we get some collection firm to take any of this on on a contingency basis, so we're not spending anything on it? Maybe not the $1,688, but the $1,180.
Let me mention that I think that's a process, too, that could potentially go before that, but we need to stay on top of it before it becomes a problem.
I agree.
And that's when you're gonna be able to really collect, before they leave town. And that really is, it's almost like a customer service thing. It wouldn't really be a collection because you're calling them after 15 days, and so it's, to me, it's gonna pay for itself.
I agree.
You just can't wait until.
I just hate to.
But you're saying for that amount, it might be worth it.
For that $1,180, I hate to wave goodbye and never see it again.
I agree.
Well, I think that's what Tuck was saying, sometimes you're spending good money chasing this bad money.
Right, but if you did it contingent, you wouldn't pay anything. Somebody would just take it on, and if they collected $30,000, you know, you pay them 10.
Again, just because we're writing it off doesn't mean we're gonna stop trying to collect.
Correct, yeah. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any final questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Thank you, council. Thank you, Deborah. Okay, added to the agenda was item 26. This was the resolution. City council approves the final payment to Walcott Adams Renewal Architects for professional architecture services for RFQ number PS011-16 for exterior repairs and maintenance at Fairhope Library. Final payment is $32,510.97. And Deborah, before you get too far, can you confirm that is the proper amount?
Yes, I checked.
That we were billed for?
Yes.
Okay, I'll take a stab at this, council. You know, as you know, there was no, that we know of written agreement for this work. I don't think that it's disputed that Walcott Adams Renewal did perform this work, and they did deliver the documents that I believe the former mayor had requested be performed. I know, Councilman Brown, you spent a lot of time looking into this. If you want to add anything to my comments or make any suggestions, I'd welcome that.
Can I freely comment on it?
I think it's just trying to, while they may not have had the contract, I believe this is a good faith effort to do right by a local company that, that nobody disputes perform the work. I'll entertain a motion to pass this resolution to pay the bill to them.
So moved.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any final discussion?
Did they do this at a discount from, I guess, a normal billing?
Actually, that is, they, they claimed that they wrote off, do you know that amount, Deborah? I want to say it was over $50,000 originally.
It's close to $20,000.
About $20,000.
Okay.
They wrote off $10,620.
What was that, Deborah?
$10,620.
$10,620.
About 25%.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any final questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. And I know Mayor Wilson's never gonna let that happen again. Okay, public participation. If you've got anything else to bring forth before the council, you'll be given three minutes, and as Councilman Robinson said, we won't tolerate any personal attacks today on people that are outside of this body. I'll open up the floor for comments.
Good evening, Mayor, council, president. I went to my heart doctor today, and I got back home, the news wasn't that great. But I can tell you one thing today, I walked in here, I began to receive the love that was coming from all of you all. It was so much therapeutic for me. I think y'all helped me. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We can get your name and address for the record.
My name is Parker Payson. I live on Sea Cliff Drive. I've been living there for 19 years. I haven't spoken to all 60 or so neighbors who live on our street, or the people who live along the bottom part of Fly Creek, but we're all very interested and concerned about plans to possibly change the activities that are going on relating to the marina to.
That may bring more traffic to our street. We don't have sidewalks. Those of us who've lived there for a while, have seen dogs get killed in front of bids and, you know, just terrible things that, just with the traffic that's happened before, we're worried about more people coming in, changes with noise, how that will affect the value of our property. The reports had talked about bringing in new revenue to the city. There's an awful lot of tax revenue that residents are currently paying to the city. Also, we don't want to see our property values go down because of some changes. There's been some problems with crime. I had my seawall burnt down. It cost me about $20,000. Four other neighbors were also affected, and those were people who the police thought walked up from the public beach. So it's not a fake worry that we have, it's very real. And I think I can say that all of us will be very active and spirited in looking after our interests as homeowners for changes that might affect us. Does it violate protocol for me to ask you a question?
You can ask. I mean, we're not obligated to respond, but you're well, you're free to ask.
Do you, do you know with any of the plans that are being considered, if they are gonna have traffic?
I think it's a little premature, what I would suggest, and at the risk of sounding rude, is watch the work session. We discussed it for quite a while tonight in the work session, and I don't know if it will alleviate your concerns. It might give you a little better picture of what we're talking about at this point in time, but it will be published online, and I would encourage you to go back. Rather than us rehash probably 30 minutes of discussion that was held there, there was nothing specific that was discussed that I could say, other than maybe bringing the marina up to code and having a clean marina that could possibly attract more boats. I mean, for instance, I'll give you, I can give you, for instance, you know, I think that there are about 42 slips approximately out of 60 that are currently occupied. Well, if a, the current leaseholder or the future leaseholder or the city was to invest some money in making some of those finger piers nicer or dredging, I can't say that more boats wouldn't come there. So, you know, you might have that additional traffic, but nothing specific. We did have a discussion about the public beach, and I know that, I know at least myself expressed my thoughts on that. I would encourage you to go back and review that as well.
Thank you. So it's really more about sprucing up the marina as opposed to creating a destination spot for.
Well, I would say that, totally rule that out. We are actually going to go into executive session after this, where we can talk a little bit more about price points and lease terms and things like that, and we might get a little bit, a clearer picture. We can't talk about lease terms that, in front of potential bidders, if that was to even be put out for bid.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Palucci, what are you doing here, other than just trying to look sharp in the back of the room?
I'm deserved. Thanks for calling out, council.
I can get away with that with you. One of our, one of our Fairhope volunteer firefighters, and I believe treasurer of the fire department. Thank you for your service.
Yes, sir.
I rewarded you by calling you out.
I'm hungry.
Anybody else? Okay, we'll close public participation, and if any of you want to stay around until after the executive session, I do not believe we will be taking any action on any items after executive session, so you're free to sit around and watch us come back and adjourn the meeting, but I'm sure that's all that will happen. I will now entertain a motion to go into executive session to discuss the consideration the city is willing to offer or accept when considering the purchase, sale, exchange, lease, or market value of real property, and to discuss preliminary negotiation involving matters of trade or commerce in which the city is in competition with private individuals or entities. The discussion could have a detrimental effect upon the competitive position of the city in the negotiation if the matter was discussed in public. And for anybody curious, I will tell you, not all of that pertains to the marina. I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, we'll be in executive session. I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. We are adjourned. Thanks, council.